We'll have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning. It is September 13th. It's 10 o'clock. All three county commissioners are here, and it's the week that we're going to be pit. So we'll move forward. We'll have consent and approval.
I don't know how you follow that. No exonerations to approve. Minutes for September 6th, 2023. Vouchers: General County Fund, $329,483.85. Cole Severance, $3,000. 911, $218,713.66. Chestnut Ridge Park, $15,231.36. Camp Muffley, $3,003,9580. Mason Dixon Park, $660.41. Mon County Center, $5,138.85. Transportation levy, $877,027.54. Library levy, $215,268.99. EMS levy, $1,826,69.17. Assessment valuation, $359.90. Payroll, $1,735,285.67. Morgantown Industrial TIP, $142,407. Parks and Recreation, $32,270.83. Purchasing card vouchers: General County, $6,334.60. Camp Monthly, $809.85. Mon County Center, $1,038.90. Assessment valuation, $704 for a voucher total of $5,413,208. We have no budget revisions. Position vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on our website. Fiduciary orders for September 13th, 2023.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Proffin moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have a fiduciary order?
Yeah. The petition to declare takers in the estate of Andrew Varga.
Move to approve the petition to declare takers as presented?
Second.
Proffin moved in second. Do we need any discussion or?
No, I read through this thing and yeah, it sounds like the petitioner and executress, Deborah Lynn White, had explored all the options to find the heirs.
Right.
And once they've done that, and they've been unsuccessful, so by state statute, the real property passes to the state auditor and the personal property passes to the state treasurer, and which they will dispose of. And then those proceeds, the real property proceeds, go to the general school fund, and proceeds from the personal property go to the general reserve fund. So it's sad, but it's the only next step we can take, so.
No, that's what I was gonna say.
Proffin moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Introduction of new employees. Mecca 911, come on down.
Morning.
Morning.
Mon Gay County Homeland Security Emergency Management, Mecca 911, has hired a new employee to fill vacant telecommunications positions. Holly Gibson will begin her duties on September 18th, 2023, with starting pay rate of $19.18 an hour, and as usual, she will also need to complete her probationary period. Thank you for consideration.
Move to approve personnel as presented?
Second.
Proffin moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, Brett.
Thank you. Youth Services Center, three individuals.
Okay. First off, we have a transfer from part-time to full-time. Mark Burris. His new salary will be $33,280 per year with full benefits, and he actually started that position on September 1st. Very well behind. Ainsley McIntyre is going to be a part-time relief worker. Start rate or pay the, her starting rate at hourly basis of $14.40 per hour, not eligible for benefits. Jennifer Dench, also part-time, on-call, not eligible for benefits, also $14.40 an hour. Her first day is September 15th. And that is it.
Move to approve the personnel as presented?
Second.
Proffin moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. Okay, any other? Okay, seeing none, we'll have now comments from the public. If anybody wants to come down and speak to us, we'd be more than willing to listen. Anybody interested? Yep, come on. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Regina Hodson. I am a resident here in the Cheat Lake area. We have some land near us that, from my understanding, has recently, you know, started the process of sale to a developer, and I'm very concerned about the traffic. I'm curious if a traffic study's been done on Cheat Road at any point, or if one's planned to be done. I know you guys can't answer questions, but I'm concerned as a mom for the safety of my kids. I know my neighbors are concerned. It's the 1140A Cheat Road, so it's a big chunk of land, 100 acres or so. I'm imagining quite a few number of homes in there. If it's not homes, it's a strip mall, and I'm sure many of you have driven down Cheat Road. It is not ready for that type of traffic. I don't know how they're planning on correcting that situation, but I can't even let my kids play in the front yard because I'm concerned of their safety. We've had a relative's dog wander in the front yard, and twice in the last few months, someone's just randomly picked him up and taken him. So I'm concerned about the safety, and then adding who knows how many more cars or whatever to that road is very concerning. So I'm hopeful for at least a traffic study to be done before anything is done on that property. Thank you.
Ma'am, just to say.
Go ahead, point.
We don't respond during public session, but if you stick around, we may respond in our comments. But just for, to make sure I had the address straight, you said 1140?
1140A Cheat Road is the property that's been purchased.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to? Apologize, hold on. Turn that off. Okay. Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward. We have a proclamation. It's Constitution Week. Please, come on down. How are you doing today?
Good.
Good. Yeah, all three of you, please, if you want. We'd love to have you. Do you want to state your name and then?
Good morning. I'm Susan Arnold, and I'm the Regent of the Elizabeth Luddington Haggins, Colonel John Evans Chapter of the DAR in Morgantown. And with me, I have Becky Davis from the Colonel Zach Wilson Morgan Chapter, and Joan Gibson from the Woodburn Chapter. And we would like to thank you for issuing this proclamation for Constitution Week, which reads, "Whereas it is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the 236th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, we, the members of the Montague County Commission, by virtue of the authority vested in us, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week, and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. Adopted this 13th day of September 2023." And we would also like to invite everyone to join us on September 17th at 4 o'clock for Bells Across America. We'll be on the Courthouse Square ringing bells for one minute, joining everyone across the country doing the same thing to honor the signing of the Constitution. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, I move to approve the proclamation as presented?
Second.
Proffin moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. And we've pre-populated that for you. Would you like a picture or anything?
Yes, that would be great.
Okay.
Yeah, 17th. 15th is Friday. 17th is Sunday.
Sunday.
Yeah.
Okay. We should be able to park.
You can always park.
Great.
Okay.
Do I get a bell if I can? I enjoy doing that.
I know you were disappointed last night.
I know. I didn't get a bell.
We were totally screwed.
Yeah.
I heard you on the radio.
Okay. Grant. Good morning, Colling Coon. Come on down.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I request for reimbursements. The first one is the CP grant in the amount of $6,536.78. The next one is the Governor's Highway Safety Program, impaired driving in the amount of $2,412.8. Oops. And Save Communities in the amount of $3,515.97.
Move to approve the grant documents as presented?
Second.
Proffin moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We have correspondence. Flyer regarding Scott Run Street Fair, that's this Saturday, correct?
This Saturday from 10:00 AM to dusk.
Yes. And we'll tell you, best wings in town. Great wings. Okay, announcement of the Montague County Employee Notification System. You want to explain that?
Yeah. So about a year ago, we started exploring somehow to get information out to our employees that is a little easier than a call tree. So you all tasked IT to kind of come up with some options on some companies that we could go with. They came back with a company called Expert Texting, and so between IT and myself, we've kind of worked out getting that set up. So what we're going to have is a link for employees to go to. Notice will go out later today to all the department heads, and then a flyer will be circulated as well. But you'll click on the link, the employees will click on the link. It takes you to a webpage. You'll put in your name, phone number, a mobile phone number, and an email address, and then whenever we have notifications that will need to go out to employees, such as weather-related closures, delays, you know, just important notifications for the employees, those will start going out. It's not going to be a monitored system, so they can't text back, but we can push information out to them.
Okay. Great.
Thank you, Renata, for all your hard work in setting this up. Appreciate it. Also, thanks to the IT staff.
Does anyone else have any other correspondence?
I just have one more that came in.
Okay, go ahead.
It was a postcard that came in from the Morgantown Arts Association, signed by Allison McKee. She's the secretary. It's just appreciation for the support of the grants fund.
Does anyone else have any? I have one I want to read, but I'll comment during my time period. Dear Commissioner Bloom, I've recently received a call from Mr. Richard Clegg, who is employed at the downtown Sheets. He has been charged from corporate with the duty to begin the process of moving the bus stop away from the store. The board would like to meet with all parties involved and invites everyone to meet with us at the Westover Facility, where we can discuss the stop and have available various mapping technology assets to assist in our discussion. The parties that, at a minimum, they have requested is Mountain Lime, County Commission, City Administration, County Sheriff, MPD, Justice Center Representative, Sheets Representative, Hazel's House of Hope, and then they've listed a number of best times in the next two weeks, and this is from Maria Smith from Mountain Lime Transit. And I'll discuss that. We can discuss that later. Thank you. Okay, seeing no unfinished business, we'll move to new business. Consideration to approve requisition number 82 for the University Town Center Excise Tax District Administrative Expense Fund.
The requisition is for $1,568.22, and these are for collections for the month of August.
Move to approve requisition number 82 for the UTC Excise Tax District Administrative Expense Fund as presented?
Second.
Proffin moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
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 And this is, of course, as I always mention, this is net the statutory lien of $100,000 and the tax admin fee. This is three months so far into the year, and we're trending about 8% over last year, which was the highest year ever. So we're still trending in the right direction. At that, if it, this consistent amount would project about a $212 million in sales in the district for this year. So everything's pointing in the right direction.
Agreed. Okay. B, to consider setting dates for first and second readings and public hearing on a proposed pedestrian and vehicle safety ordinance for Mon County.
Do you want to state what the dates are first, and then we'll just approve those?
Okay. So we will publish, this will be a Class II legal ad, so it has to be published twice. Publish in the newspaper on September 20th and October 4th. The first reading will be October 4th. Second reading, October 11th, and then we'll have the public hearing also on October 11th.
I would move to approve the posting process, the public notification process, and the dates as presented?
Second.
Proffin moved in second. Any discussion? It's self-explanatory. Okay, thank you. Okay, Proffin moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Consideration to approve a request for a proposal to be signed and distributed to a minimum of three ICPA firms on the list of appointed firms for the fiscal year 2023 audit as directed by the West Virginia State Auditor's Office.
I do not have that information yet. I'm waiting on some information.
Okay.
From a couple of different offices. So I will, hopefully I'll have it before next Wednesday.
The RFP process is pretty standard. It's the auditor's document. We just plug in the information. So I'd move that we approve the administrator.
Move forward.
Proceeding with the RFP process upon gathering the information she needs from the associated offices, and go ahead and issue that RFP as soon as possible.
Second.
Proffin moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other new business? Does anyone else have any new business? Okay. Seeing none, any reports from elected officials and department supervisors? Okay. Seeing none. Jeff, want you to start?
Last week's meeting, several meetings, met with the Long River Trails Conservancy last week, as well as Main Street Morgantown, one after the other. So there's a lot of potentially exciting things going on in both of those organizations. MRTC continues its hard work in maintaining the trails and expanding them as they get funding. And Main Street's got a lot of stuff coming down the pike. It's a group that's really motivated, and it's good to see they're really active and trying to push things forward to revitalize downtown. I also had the pleasure of participating in the Westwood Elementary's 911 Remembrance and Celebration on Monday. It's kind of interesting. When you get there, you realize that, of course, none of these kids were alive when 9/11/2001 happened, and, you know, they weren't even close to being alive. And it puts into perspective how long ago this was. So it was really great to have, EMS was there, and our 911 director was there, giving a history on what changed as a result of 911 and the changes they had to put in place. And we had ambulances there, and the Mon County Mobile Command Center, as well as a fire engine from the Westover Volunteer Fire Department. So the kids got to check those things out and just really be educated on what 9/11 was, what it meant, how it affected everyone. And I think it's really good that we keep that fresh in our memories, because, you know, as everyone knows how, what a horrific event it was. And it's easy to put things in the past, but it's good that we continue to bring them forward. Last thing I'll say, my dear departed grandmother, Mimi, had a saying. She had two favorite teams, West Virginia and whomever was playing pit. So luckily, this weekend, we get a convergence of those two, and Sweet Caroline and all that, let's roll on down the road. So that's all I've got.
Sounds good. Go on.
Since our last meeting last Wednesday, the administrator and I participated in a ClearGov, or a demonstration with ClearGov regarding their budgeting tool. So we're taking a look at that and taking a look at some other, doing our due diligence in that regard. Friday, we had staff reports, and I had a broadband tag-up. And in the evening, I went to the MHS Musselman Game, which was a really good game. Saturday, we went to Fairmont West Band Spectacular. Unfortunately, we got there in time to get settled, and then the rain settled in, and Morgantown didn't even get off the bus. So, but hopefully, Fairmont State's going to have another one, and hopefully that will replace that, because Winnie only has so many opportunities to perform this year, so I don't want to miss any of them. Tuesday, I had a broadband call, and then the administrator and I participated in an HR call. Today's a regular day. Tomorrow's a second Thursday of the month, so it's pretty busy. I have MAP Executive Committee meeting, Red Team meeting, and Development, Mon County Development Authority meeting. Friday, we have staff reports, and it's broadband sync. And of course, as Commissioner Arnett mentioned, Saturday is the backyard brawl. So I'm actually looking forward to getting a chance to actually go to the game. I'm looking forward to this weekend. My daughter, Becca, is coming in since she, it's the first time she's been in since she left for school. She's coming in with her boyfriend, so we're looking for a weekend of showing him what it's like to be in Morgantown for a backyard brawl. So looking forward to it. Do, Monday, obviously, was 9/11. I hope we all took time to remember the events of that day and those people that aren't with us today because of that, of those events, and the scars that they leave on some of, a lot of our residents and a lot of our citizens. Along the same line, I don't mean to end on such a downer, but I do want to recognize the passing of Beth Harvey. She passed away last Wednesday. Anybody that knew the local Mon County school system knew Beth. She was always that friendly face that greeted you at the door if you had an appointment with the superintendent. She was the one that answered. As a matter of fact, anytime someone calls from the school system, it comes up Beth Harvey. I got a call from the school system last week, and it came up Beth Harvey, and I was like, so I, condolences to Rick and his kids. They had two kids. Beth was only 46. And it's, again, she left, in those short years that she was here working for the school system, she left her mark on everybody she ever met. She was just, never, never didn't have a smile on her face. And she was just super pleasant. She's just one of those, one in a million people that you meet that you don't forget. And we won't forget her, and I appreciate, I'm going to send out my sincere condolences to her family and all those that knew her. And that's all.
I attended the Hope Hill Sober Center Board Meeting, and we discussed, and we are going to open up a couple hours earlier this weekend, just in case we have several individuals who start early and make bad mistakes. But we are going to be open for this weekend. Second, this, as I stated on the one letter that I read, that this is a continuation. I just want to clear that the county commissioners have requested this meeting several months ago, and we weren't able to get everyone on the same path. There is some real serious problems with the bus stop right behind Sheets. But it's a problem that's not only a public problem, but also a private problem, because some of the problems that take place are on the property of Sheets. So that's why I'm glad that all parties are going to be there to see what we can possibly do on that. Along that lines, I've been in communication with the property managers of Pierpont Center. As you're aware, we have individuals who hang out on the median, but it's on private property. And then I've received several problems of the individuals leaving that area and doing destruction of property on, in that Pierpont Center. So we have been meeting with them. I'm trying to, made some suggestions, and hopefully, we will get back and see if there is some solution to some of the problems that are out there. And finally, this is, as I said, this has been a very disappointing week for me. I was supposed to, thrilled, I wasn't supposed to be here today because I was supposed to see Bruce Springsteen last night, and of course, he canceled. And then, on the same light, we are trying, and I want it very clear, I was on the radio today, we are trying to work together to have a face-to-face meeting with all the city governments and the county administration, with the state DOH, to see what we can do to resolve the issues of the entrance ways, not only coming into our county, but also the trash and the other problems that seem to be not being taken care of in our county. And hopefully, we can get a meeting together, and we've offered several suggestions. I believe the suggestions are really good, and hopefully, we can move forward and resolve some of these issues, so the citizens of Montague County can be treated like everyone else in the roadway. So I, hopefully, that we can resolve these issues and move forward with the state DOH. With that?
Tom, I forgot to say what to say.
Sure.
Ma'am?
Oh, yeah.
I did want to address your comments. I don't know, I don't know if it would be a DOH requirement to review it. From a county perspective, I don't believe that there's anything that occurs that would, that would be like a check and balance on that. Those are one of those type of things that, again, I've been trying to at least get the subdivision regulations brought to the commission to, for a full public hearing for things like this, where you have development that just goes on unfeathered in any area of the county without any, without any, any ability to address it. So I would, I would suggest that you contact our planner.
Okay.
And tell him your address. If you come up here, we'll give you his information before you leave. If you contact our planner and ask him, also, you may want to check, he's in the same area downstairs, our MMPO director, as far as that road, he would know, like, the DOH side of it as far as restrictions, and when someone's putting a development, and what permits they have to get, DEP permits, or whether there's highway permits, or you can check with him, and he can give you some information about that. I hate to just push people off. I wish I actually knew the answer, but I knew, they may not give you the answers that you want, but they'll give you some information. And again, these are the type of things that we've been trying to address for over 50 years, but we just, we struggle to do that. And I'm going to keep pushing that we do, so.
Thank you.
The DOH part of it is, the only requirement that I'm aware of is they would be required to have a new, this is the former Betty Pushkar property you're talking about, goes down over the hill.
Yes.
They would be required to have an access permit from the road, and probably require some type of, depending on the scope of the development, some type of lane to the right, attorney lane to access for ingress and egress. Other than that, there are none that I'm aware of, as far as it's a state road. So there are no regulations, at least from the county, that we could even put into place that would, that would prohibit anything as far as the roadway would go through there, so.
Well, a lot of times, just like what happened out there at, what was that, Pine? Pinecrest or Pineview? Pinecrest, where, yes, somebody gets a permit to put one development in there, and then that's off DOH's radar, and then someone else can come in and do unfeathered development off of that. And then you have 400 houses off a single entry, one entry in, no entry out, which wouldn't happen if you had some sort of subdivision regulations that would prevent that.
Yeah.
So it may not be the first person that applies for the permit that does the most damage. It's the first person provides for a permit, and then they have a private road, and then they can do anything they want off of that. And DOH has no say. So those are things that we're trying to address in this county. We're, you know, we're a victim of our own success. We're a growth county, and we need to have more thoughtful planning into how we expand, so that residents like yours, areas like yours, aren't impacted. We had other areas. Cheat Lake is a prime example. There's a lot of areas. Mayfield Road, we get people coming here all the time, where someone just develops and puts a gym out of the middle of a road that's barely passable most of the time of the day, and everybody on that road suffers, and there's no control over that. So those are the type of things that we want to address.
I appreciate it. So the DOH would have, I mean, there's another, you know, half-built development down the road. So DOH probably approved that development, and now this one's going to piggyback on that potentially?
Maybe. I don't, again, not knowing anything about the area, I would ask Mr. Austin, Bill Austin, he's our MMPO director, and he might know a little bit more about the road and what's going on, and he may be able to look into it from the DOE perspective, ask some of his contacts at DOH. But I'd also ask the planner, too, that, you know, these type of things that... Uh, but I'd also ask the planner too, that, uh, you know, these type of things that, uh, you know, I, that you as a citizen can help support in the future to try to keep this development from going on without any sort of planning.
I agree. Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
No problem.
So, I do know that that was the problem when they built that lake?
Andrew.
It's a road cave, and so, but you're on the other side of the road, right?
Yes.
Okay, but still, no, uh, Sean is correct. I think the DOH is gonna be the key of ingress and, you know, egress to the, because that, that's gonna be how and where, and are they gonna then make the road larger? Then that's the questions that we need to, you need to ask, and we'll go from there, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We be gone.